No motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the MSBA Monthly Report.
... Board Report. We begin with a look at filing for the next school board election, which is only a couple months away. There are many things districts can do between now and the start of filing to prepare. MSBA's Director of Board Development Kathryn Whitaker says that this is a great time to start communicating with the community about the upcoming election process.
So candidate filing doesn't open until December. So you have technically two months to let your community know that you do have an opening on the school board potentially. You have time to let them know what it looks like to be a school board member, what does it mean to file, how do you file, and just to give them information about your school district in general. We've created a presentation that superintendents, board presidents can use to inform the community about their school district as a whole, and then also about what it means to be a school board member.
Whitaker also says that MSBA has numerous resources to help potential school board candidates, from filing to election.
So on our website, we have a ton of information, some written by lawyers so that they know how to appropriately file and run a campaign, but some written by us, just again trying to outline what does it look like to be a school board member, what does it feel like to be a school board member, what are your responsibilities. So we've created a module for candidates that school districts can sign up for and then give the login information to those candidates, so they can go in and have a better understanding of now that you're a candidate and you filed, you know, what does it look like to be a school board member. It's interactive, gives a lot of information about the state and what it means to be a school board member.
Visit the MSBA website for all of the resources and training modules available to school boards and potential candidates. The start of the next legislative session is also just around the corner. MSBA's Director of Governmental Relations, Branch Shields, says that the upcoming Fall Delegate Assembly is the chance to have your voice heard on issues surrounding public education as we head toward the next legislative session.
Coming up later this fall is our Fall Delegate Assembly, held on the Friday of Annual Conference. This is an important opportunity to have your district's voice heard in setting education policy for the state of Missouri. Every member of MSBA is guaranteed at least one delegate in our assembly. Now is a great time to make sure that your delegates' contact information is up to date with MSBA, so they receive the latest news and information for the delegate assembly. As we said earlier, legislative session is just around the corner, beginning Wednesday, January 3rd. Make sure you were signed up for MSBA's Legislative Voice Newsletter, published weekly during session, for the latest information and advocacy actions to help you advocate for your students in Jefferson City. As elected officials, your voice is crucial for MSBA to succeed in our legislative goals for the benefit of our students.
And as Branch said, the Fall Delegate Assembly will be held during the Friday of Annual Conference. If you haven't registered for the conference yet, it's not too late. The 2023 MSBA Annual Conference, in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials, will be held November 2nd through the 4th in Kansas City. The event will once again feature numerous breakout sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, along with a great lineup of general session speakers. The conference will also feature the Education Expo, the Student Showcase, and much more. Visit the MSBA website for more information. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in November for the next MSBA Board Report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on the agenda, we have the Consent Agenda.
I'll see, make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented?
I'll second.
A motion in a second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have Public Participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and respond unappropriately by mail or telephone at a later date. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. Per policy BDDH-1, public participation at board meetings, the following rules will apply to the public comment portion of the meeting. The public comment period will not exceed 15 minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period. Each speaker will be allotted no more than five minutes. Discussion will be limited to items from the posted agenda. All speakers must provide their name and address prior to speaking, and if there is insufficient time for everyone to speak, the board will encourage participants to submit their questions in writing and utilize the process for putting an item on the agenda. I do not have any public comments.
I did not receive any.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have the Report of the Superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The first thing on my report is our September enrollment numbers. And on the screen, I have the pre-K enrollment from the first day of school and our September, last Wednesday in September count for 23, 24, 22, 23, and 21, 22. You can see those remain steady. We're right where we should be and really kind of maxed out on our space. So later on, when we do a Prop SG update, hopefully we'll talk about our Early Childhood Center and the opportunity to have a little more space. For K-12 enrollment, you can see that first day of school, we were at 1792, and I am very happy to report that for the first time since COVID, we are up over 1,800 at our last Wednesday in September count. So that number is 1,801. And you can see that how that compares to the prior two years as well. So very pleased with that number. There are some financial repercussions. There's a COVID provision right now that allows us to go back to 2020 and use our ADA numbers from then. That's falling off after this year, so it's very important that our enrollment is as high as it can be. Next on my superintendent report are the principal reports.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think my report is first, I believe. Okay, on the first slide there, I featured science. This year, we've made sort of a big push to make sure that science is an integral part of instruction, especially in grades three through five, and we've bought and purchased MySci, and it's very hands-on. It's a lot of experiment-based science lessons. And so here are several lessons of third, fourth, and fifth grade students. They're separating mixtures, they're learning about properties of matter, they made Ublic, they're looking at like light, and then my favorite in the top right, they were doing a chemical change lab, and it emitted a gas and it was smelling, and you can see they're all covering their nose. I happened to be in the room during that time, so that was fun to see. This second slide is a Power Hour slide. By no means is it all of our Power Hour groups, but it features some of our bigger groups. At the top, we have robotics. Mrs. Koenig, even though she's the gifted teacher for the district, she has time in her schedule on Power Hour to work with these students building the VEX robots, and they demonstrate and they do competitions. And down in the bottom, she was able to pull some third grade students together for the Chamber of Commerce presentation, I guess, when they all came to the building, and those students do the smaller robots. So we have a variety of the different sizes of robots that the students are using. And then we have some STEM groups, some Makerspace, and at the bottom right, we have our dancing dragons. They're like a highlight. Mrs. Keeker, she's worked really, really hard to make sure that the students have like a dance routine, and she enlisted Ms. Ochsner and Ms. Wibbenmeyer to help her this year. I'm not going to show the video, because it's like a six-minute video, but it's there for you guys to watch. They performed at the High School Assembly, and I think they were the highlight. So you guys need to take a peek at that. This is just a homecoming slide, all things homecoming. In the center, we pulled off a color picture, similar to a few years ago, we did a rainbow picture, but we did it in the center of the football field, which was very hard to organize. So keeping them in the bleachers was a little easier, not a lot, a little. And so there are just some different spirit pictures from throughout the week. And this is a little bit of everything. On the left-hand side, starting at the top, we have preschool, then kindergarten, and then first grade. They had their fire safety week, so thank you to all the fire departments that helped put that on for our students. Then we have Dr. McLeod accepting a check from the St. Genevieve Elks Lodge on behalf of our school district, or for our school district, to purchase some books to give to our students. Then we had Pink the Vive, that's just one picture. I think our whole school was decked out in pink that day. And then at the bottom, we have one picture of McTeacher Night. This year, we earned over $1,000 for our school. So it's the most that I know of in a long time. And then preschool had earned a Kona Ice Party from PTO for having the most members sign up. And then we also had the PTO Me and My Girl Dance, no, Me and My Guy Dance and Me and My Gal Dodgeball. And then we celebrated National Custodians Day. And then it's hard to see, but right there, there are 99 little gems that performed before a football game, so Ms. Ochsner took care of that as well. And it was a little sunny in this picture, but Mr. Kingery and I met with our students in the month, and we had ice cream and recess. And then I am not going to read all of these names, because I think we have like 40 names. So the names are on there. These are our Positive Office Referrals for this past month. So those were our students of the month. Mr. Kingery takes care of the certificates and meeting with the students and taking their pictures, and I believe he was a little swamped one day. And did Dr. Taylor have the honor of delivering some positive office referrals?
I had the privilege of doing that. That's the best part of my day.
And then so our final slide is our Feature Teacher Superstaff for the month of October. Our Feature Teacher is Mrs. Jennifer Sutton. She's our new math instructional coach. She received an enormous amount of recommendations, and all of them were centered around her willingness to help teachers and students, anywhere from planning, helping get things ready for centers, working on assessments, going in and modeling and coaching, meeting with teachers, organizing data, analyzing it. And then not only that part, but she was recognized for her help with students and her just relationship building and being able to assist us when we needed to on certain days. And then we have Ms. Patty Naggar. She's our daytime custodian, and I have to say, I have never seen this many nominations. Between September and October, I think Patty had over 30 nominations. So it was well-deserving, and it was all about just for her, it was building her relationships with students, knowing them all by name. And then some of you will find this funny, handling all the codes, the code yellow, the code green, the code brown. And she does it, you know, as soon as her radio goes off, she's there to assist. I had to add that, because that was really funny. So that's it for St. Genevieve Elementary. And then Mrs. Heberly and Mrs. Fritsch couldn't be here tonight, so I'm going to try my best to do their presentation. They have a Faculty of Month and Staff of the Month. Her Faculty of the Month is Nicole Seer. Oh my goodness, I'm gonna try to read this. Nicole really helped me out this month. She helped me rearrange my classroom. She really cares about her coworkers. She also got her first potluck organized. She makes a strong culture at BLE. And then the Staff of the Month was Michelle Bader. She worked hard all summer, making sure our district, or sorry, our school was the best, was in the best condition, sorry, should have put my glasses on. Her hard work does not go unnoticed. She is also always so happy and helpful with staff and students. She puts in the time over and above her normal work schedule. We are so lucky to have her. And then she, too, listed some positive office referrals. I'll start at the top left. Barrett Hogan-Miller, Braylon Campbell, Adeline Lerk, Lake Noble, Violet Terra Sanchi, Aiden Ragsdale, Hunter May, May Rose, and Emily Carlisle. Those are their positive office referrals. And then she also put a picture of the Elks Lodge donation for books. She had a couple of pictures with our ELA coaching sessions with Shannon Heiser from the RPDC. And then there are just some pictures with the Bloomsdale Elementary Custodians, because they, too, celebrated Custodians Day. And this is her all-things-homecoming slide. I'm not even going to attempt to try to...
I want to know what the one on the middle left is. That one's rather curious.
That is bikers versus surfers.
That is Mrs. Bowen in the background.
Mrs. Bowen, okay. Could not place.
Nonya's like, that's my sister, I don't even recognize.
And I have to look at that one closer later, with my glasses on.
She's in the back, the tall one.
And then the kindergarten students took a field trip to the Perryville Pumpkin Patch, so the top three pictures are those. And then at Bloomsdale Elementary, they've already had their fifth grade career day, and so these are some pictures of the local businesses that they toured. It looks like they're at the hospital, and I don't want to take a guess on where else they're at. I'm not sure. Okay, and that's it for St. Gene and Bloomsdale.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I really appreciate it. You know, I never have a shortage of positive things to say about our SGMS Dragons, both young and old, and so I thank you for this opportunity. I put together a homecoming slide for you as well. This one specifically focuses on our end-of-the-week pep rally that we had, and we really try, in situations like this, to let it be as student-led as possible. So the kids really worked behind the scenes to get the agenda together, to get the proper approvals. They came to me and talked about it, picked the date, picked the times, really let them kind of take charge as much as they could. Mr. Samples emceed for us and did a fabulous job, and you can see some of the fun things that they got to do on that day. It was a really great assembly, and I want to thank everybody that worked hard on it. It was our dragon groups, it was the buddies, it was the teachers, the students, of course. And so I want to thank them for that and congratulate them, too. It went really well. But it's not all fun and games. We do some learning, too, but that can be fun, too. On the left-hand side, you can see there's the Facts 2 class, and they are working on an advanced sewing project. This is beyond the square pillow and the simple apron, and we've moved on now to over-the-shoulder cinch sacks, which is a very practical item. You know, middle schoolers love that. So they're working on that there, and you can see that even the guys are getting into it. That's a great project for them. Like I said, extremely practical. And on the right-hand side, we've got some students who are the top keyboarding students in each of their hours, and this is one that is near and dear to my heart, because yours truly was the top student in keyboarding in Bernie High School, 1993. Yes, they were computers, not typewriters. So I recognize the talent and skill that it takes to receive such an award. If my wife were here, she would tell you, a Bernie graduate herself, that typing in those days was a freshman class, and I took it as a junior. That does not necessarily put an asterisk next to my title. It's still valid, but these are your guys. This is from each of the hours. Justin Boyer, Dominic Di Mercurio, Easton Cameron, and Julian O'Neill is in the bottom right there, and actually, he's the fastest. If you want to know what it takes to beat Julian, the answer right now is 55 words a minute. But it's only October. I expect that number is going to increase. Maybe someday he'll catch up with me, I don't know. It's a lofty goal, but I'm going to put that before him. Julian is a brand-new student at St. Gene this year, and as you can see, is fitting in perfectly. He's doing a great job. We're really proud of those guys, and especially Julian.
I'm curious what the benchmark is.
87. Dragons on fire. As you guys know, I always like to read these off. I just can't fit everybody on there, and I apologize for that. One of these days, I'm going to have to have Nonya show me how to make a video, so that we can get all those lovely faces on there, but let's at least do the names. Nino Battican, he got two, and that's Nino at the bottom in the center, in case you're curious. Aiden Choat, Tyler Sherry, Brooklyn Meyer, Gabe Bligh, Drew Roth, Audrey Rublitis, Damian Ferris, Brody Wolk, Zach Ritter, Dawson Witte, A.J. Welch, Zoe Gill, Josh Crossland, Bentley Graham, Zach Nagar, and Caleb Wolk. Congratulations to those students. The Spotlight Award will be announced tomorrow. In the meantime, you may enjoy these photographs of students' pets doing their homework for them. This was a project that Dr. Oldham put together during Homecoming Week, just for the fun of it, also to give the students another chance to show their mastery of managing digital media, and to get a few more points in before grade cutoff. And it turned out to be a really fun project. And as you can see, we had all sorts of entries. We had dragons, we had turtles, we had horses, we had cats and dogs, of course, and the students did a really neat job of that. And he's put together a video and is posting that out. You might want to look for that. It's so fun to watch. He did a great job with it, and the kids did, too, of course. So next month, I'll update you with two Spotlight Awards. And then finally, a quick look at what's ahead. Today, we had another club day. Grade reporting cutoff, as I mentioned, is coming up soon. This Sunday, the Fall Play, 2 o'clock at the PAC. We'd love to see you there. And then next week, Red Ribbon Week and Career Week at the same time. Great activities planned for both of those. And then parent-teacher conferences on the 26th, of course, and then our first dance of the year will be on November 3rd, 5:30 to 7:30. Those disco dancers there, by the way, are dancing at the dance, not at parent-teacher conferences. Just wanted to clarify that, and thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
We finally changed our slideshow to be different from the last year. Okay, so the one on the left is just a picture of our color guard. That top picture is a Spanish fashion show. The bottom was a soil erosion project to talk about like, we used terraforming for it. And then the one on the right is from Mrs. Yemnitz's forensic class, forensics class, and it was about like evidence and like all that.
All that. My turn. All right, so this one's Elks Student of the Month was Cole Nicholson, and our Road Race Student of the Month was Addison Geiler, and we have a lot of positive office referrals, starting with Hannah Woodruff, Elijah Bennett, Tessa Hager, Savannah DeRouche, Hayden Ford, Wyatt Springcamper, Morgan Schwent twice, Lucy Sears twice, Kristen Witte, Tylin Hager, Caitlin Moll, Lexie Warren, Caden Smith twice, Chloe Choat, Gage Schinnabarger, Hazel Schwent, Audrey Geg, Chloe Weiner twice, Katherine Herzog, Evan Winters, Eleanor McLinn, Justin Harris, Hope Schmelzley, Austin Nagar, Dalton Estes, Braden Coons, Caitlin Ross, Victoria Maryfield, Alexis Fimmer, Seth Fisher, Zoe Arons, Holton Reeves, Brendan Kaufman, Caden Woody, Ava Brown, Chase Yemnitz.
Okay, so for the start of our news, for FFA, Alyssa Beckerman, John Merklin, Ryder Kyer, and Jacob Solser placed first out of nine teams at the district grassland contest, and next week, they're going to state at Hallsville, Missouri. And then the next one, so our counselor's made a webpage, and it has been super, super useful. It's for every grade in the high school. There's on the senior tab, it's been super useful for me, because it's got a monthly layout of everything that I probably need to have done for college, and it's not just for kids that are going to college. There's a college section, and there's a military section for each month. I checked out the sophomore and the junior page as well, and they've got stuff. I checked out mostly the junior page, and it was like when they should probably be looking at colleges, where, and there's like links of like where to find certain scholarships. Like it has been super, super useful, and it's a new thing that they made, and they sent it out, and I think it's on the school webpage, too. So.
And then there's Powderpuff and Spirit Nights. Spirit Night went really well. Student Council put it on with Ava Greer, here emceeing for most of the night. We have Anna Bennett and Aiden White here pictured at the bottom, and then the end result of the Powderpuff game at the top, where the seniors won 12 to 6 over the juniors. It was a great time. Everyone had a lot of fun, and I know it's a lot of, for Spirit Night, I know, it's a lot of how people figure out where they're going to vote for king and queen, so. Oh, yeah, and we had games there as well with the annual hairdressing competition as well, which was what was pictured.
Okay, so for floats, that was our winner. It was the sophomore class. Their class sponsors are Ms. Jamie Bowman and Ms. Alex Newman. The juniors got second, seniors got third, and the freshmen got last. So then the parade, I showed a picture of our marching band, and then our cheerleaders far behind, and then I figured I'd put some cars in there. But everybody had a blast, it was a lot of fun. It was my favorite part of the whole day. We threw out candy.
And then pictured there at the top, and top on the right is King Jack Farlow and Queen Hope Schmelzley. And then there at the bottom, right under that, is a picture that we got from the dance, because I know our yearbook crew was doing something a little different this year, where they didn't have any yearbook people taking pictures at the dance, they're having students submit their own pictures that they took while they were there. And that's one that we picked up from that drive. Oh, yeah, and we had a DJ at the dance for the first year this year, too. Moving on to some sports news, volleyball, I don't know what the score is or was if they're done, but I know it's right here. Our esports team is doing fairly well, if I were to say, if you were to ask me, because they are 30 and 37, with our leader, record-wise, being Damian Wheeler, going 12 and 5 so far throughout the season. And then moving to golf, straight across, Carly Bosler and Eleanor McLinn both advanced to state, which they played yesterday and today. I do not know where Eleanor placed, but I know Carly Bosler placed 31st overall as a junior. And then football, right there underneath it, pictured is Jacob Schweiger celebrating a touchdown. We are currently 5 and 3. We play Kelly this Friday at Kelly. Yeah, last Friday, we beat our seven, 49 to 7 for our homecoming game. And then cross-country there, on the bottom right, they're doing well. I know our girls are Holland and Gara leading the pack there, finishing around second to fifth normally, and then we have a lot of places around there. And then for the boys, I know Adam Odor is leading the pack for our boys' cross-country team, but I know we're doing very well overall.
So for the Teacher of the Month, it was Mr. Ian Diamond, and the student said, "This teacher always brings a smile to his students' faces, and he never fails to help us with anything that we need. Even on spirit dress-up days, he participates and brings the school spirit. No matter how challenging his class can be at times, he always makes sure that we understand the lessons. He also makes our workspace and classroom an environment where we can feel at peace and comfort with the calming music and LED lights. Every day, I'm excited to learn something new in his class due to how exciting this teacher makes it for us." He is the chemistry teacher, and that is not an easy subject, and he was so, so patient when I took it. He was so patient of all of the questions that I asked, and it's all of the exceptions to the rules, and he never, he never, he always waited until you understood it, and he explained it in many different ways, not just one way. It was a good class.
And then pictured there is our October background for our Chromebooks. It's a very busy one, because of how busy October has been and continues to be. We have some upcoming events there listed as well. Trick or Treat for canned goods, which is being put on by FBLA this year, is next Wednesday, October 25th. And then under that is the Veterans Day Assembly, which is November 9th, because we are off school that Friday. And then, later on, later on, um, the day of our next board meeting is the Blood Drive, November 21st.
Hey, that's all we got.
And Professional Development Day.
Alright, just reporting on our last Professional Development Day, it was October 2nd. I put a few key notes up there. Our preschool, this wasn't everything that they focused on, but I tried to give you the highlights. Preschool, we did differentiate as much as we possibly could for different levels, that's been a request throughout the year. So, early childhood, looked at their different learning standards, inclusion, instructional practices, K through 5, went through letters training, one of the requests was, can we have that during PD days? But ours being pulled out as much. Our K through 5 sped, did not, most of them did not have letters training, so if they didn't, they focused on inclusion, progress reporting, and collaboration with their paras, which was something that they asked for. And then our K through 5 special areas like P E, art, library, music, they collaborated with each other, and then they also talked about individual student needs, and talked about how they could support specific students. Six through 12, they had collaboration, they also focused on competency-based learning, which is also part of that waiver process that we've been working towards. And then, the emergency response app that we newly, that's newly acquired, and our paras also came back in on October 2nd. They finished up their required videos, and they, they discussed how to support students as well, and were able to collaborate with their supervising sped teachers. Overall, our feedback was pretty good. This was the survey question on our overall feedback, so you can see we had some pretty good marks. Our upcoming PD is February 16th, it's River Summit, which means that we're combining with other area district, um, schools, and we're hosting this year, and we've got a fantastic committee, and even people that aren't technically on the committee, working very hard. I'm very proud of the work that they've done, and it's gonna be a good one, and if you've got time, I would suggest coming, visiting. We've got a good keynote that was suggested by one of our teachers, we're looking forward to kicking that off, but I want to say about 90% of the sessions being presented were either St. Genevieve teachers, or people that St. Genevieve teachers have recruited from outside places, so, they've done a fantastic job. February 20th, we are working as much as we can, one of the requests, it was a big hit last year, was build your own PD. We do have letters training for K through 3, so that's kind of our A plan, but we're looking at, how can we give teachers the time to work on some of their goals and their individual areas of focus? The other feedback that we got from our PD was, we asked them, what, as a result of your PD, what have you learned? A lot of people responded with competency-based learning, the safety app, literacy strategies, career fairs, and behavior strategies. And for future PD, they reiterated that they wanted to focus on mental health, curriculum work, technology integration, collaboration, especially in K through 5, and early childhood specific topics, and competency-based learning as well.
That's all I have? Thank you. Alright, next on the agenda is unfinished business, and the first item is Prop SG update.
Yeah, I've got a couple update pictures for you. Uh, on the middle school, you can see there is a rectangle cut down in that bottom piece of concrete, that happens to be the wall inside the nurse's office. They built a temporary little room inside of there, so that they didn't disturb them too much. They came out with an initial piece of equipment, and it was fairly loud, and a lot of vibration went through the building. After about, what, Dr. Mercer, three or four hours, they-
They gave you a great job.
Yeah. But it was not making the progress that they wanted to see, so at that point, Matt contacted a couple other, um, people to see if they could have some equipment out here that might do a better job. So, they got a, probably a four-foot diameter saw, concrete wet saw, uh, made a plan, brought it in, I think about a week later, and it did a much better job, and was able to, to get a hole in there, I, and they just finished up that one day, didn't they?
One day?
Yeah. So if you look here, the picture on the left is in the rectangle, in the doorway, looking out into, and if you see where that guy in the orange is, that's the elevator pit, that's where the elevator's going to go, so that's gonna be a little hallway down there, from the elevator into the nurse's office. And then on the right is just another lower picture of that doorway. And, uh, for the middle school, I noticed, I, I tried to go by and check at least every other day, if not every day, and they're putting more forms up, I think they're getting ready to pour some more concrete. They're going around behind the back of the boys' bathroom, connecting to the middle school building, so it's really starting to take shape, and I think Dr. Mercer put a plan out there, so that people could actually look out the window, and then look at the plan, and get a good visual of actually what's going on out there, and what it's gonna look like at the end. So, that's coming along nicely. The Early Childhood Center, I was able to go to a Board of Aldermen meeting, and, um, talk to them about an opportunity to partner, and perhaps move up a portion of the city's water line upgrade, that was originally scheduled for 25, that might have been pushed off to 26 in their facilities plan, and just to see if maybe some things could be rearranged, and move that up, and do it in conjunction with the Early Childhood Center. Right now, with the four-inch water main there, we have significant pressure and volume issues that would not allow that building to be sprinkled as it needs to be. It's 31,000 square feet, and that's required to be sprinkled, or we'd have to ask for a variance from the city. So, they seem to be open to having that discussion, so we're gonna get some proposals together, some bids together, and, and take it back to them, and hopefully, we'll be able to get something done. I was very happy with, with how that meeting went, and the feedback that we received from the alderpeople. Site work is supposed to begin this week, I went out there this morning, on my way back from Bloomsdale, to see if there was any equipment out there, and perhaps snap a couple pictures, and there was just a tripod set up in the field, so. I think it's getting ready to start, but it, they don't have the equipment out there yet. And, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have the Instructional Program Presentation, Middle School Health and PE.
Good evening, and thank you guys for having us. I am Coach Walk Robinson, and I am the girls' middle school PE coach, and we have with us here some students tonight. We have Mackenzie Greer, who's an eighth-grade student, Connor Hill, seventh grade, and Wyatt Schmelzley, a seventh grader, and they're gonna do our presentation for us tonight.
Uh, I'm Coach Coleman, Middle School Boys, PE and Health. I'm gonna kind of give a brief overview of the next slide. You know, PE, the way we set it up, we try to make a, I guess, a schmorzberg of everything that we believe kids need to do, and, and be physical, whether it's workouts, gameplay, and of course, health lessons. And so, we've kind of started with creating units. Most units are four weeks long, uh, we don't, you know, necessarily stick exactly to the same four weeks in a row, we try, a lot of it depends on weather and gym availability, especially these first eight weeks, or even a little bit longer, it's just on the weather. If it was too hot when we started, we'd do volleyball and stuff inside, and if it's nice, we go out and do flag football and ultimate frisbee, and so, uh, those are two different units, and they just kind of mesh together because of that reason. At the beginning of each semester, we also, you know, do testing and stuff for physical fitness, and we mix that in. So, basically, one day a week, it might just be a workout, which these guys will talk about, and, and then, you know, eighth graders maybe do a little bit more in the weight room as time goes on too. So, uh, aga- again, we just try to mix a little bit of everything in those four-week units, and the next few slides will explain exactly what we do.
So in first semester, we play volleyball, badminton, pickleball, flag football, ultimate frisbee, and basketball and handball. And then in the second semester, we play bowling, washers, shovelboard, bags, soccer, floor hockey, track and field, golf, and softball and baseball.
So, usually we have, uh, PE five days of the, of the week, and usually, one day, we have a workout, and we do one of the 10 workouts.
We do health every other week, we do nutrition, technology, health promotion, do like vaping, smoking, and keeping your physical health up, um, of the body.
We do a physical pre-test to see how like, you, your body is and stuff, and then we do a rules pretest about the games that we do, and then, we do a dance routine, which the girls do for their, like, final, I guess you could say. And then, the creating PE lesson, we started this year, and we get to basically do a week of what one of the students want, and then, the post-physical test is how you are at the end of the year, to see if you've improved, and then the post-rules is see if you've learned more about the games and stuff that we do.
Alright, so, you know, that, again, that's a basic overview of all of our units. Again, most of those things are mixed in, and those pre and post-tests just allow us to see what the kids knew or have done at the beginning, and if they've showed improvement at the end. And then, again, like we said, the creating a PE lesson, that's something new, we're gonna give them a little bit more, uh, I guess, the choice of what they would like to do, with some guidelines of mixing in the physical fitness and stuff, um, so they were kind of looking, because we haven't really gotten to the, into that yet, but I think they're looking forward to that. So, that's basically the way we've set up our curriculum, and, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda are the 2023, 2024 bus route maps.
Yes, in your packet, you will see the bus routes provided to us in the highlighter, mostly yellow highlighter, by Fowler Bus Company. He spent quite a bit of time getting those updated based on the routes that we're kind of, um, so basically, just information, so that you know where our buses are traveling.
They have times, not listed here, but, do they have the time, number, period, any two options?
Yeah, they've got a general time, and that's really figured out in the first two weeks, uh, because the stops change every year, you know, there's no students at this stop, there's extra students at, or there's an extra stop, um, so they have to adjust, and, and really, the first two weeks is them adjusting and figuring out when they need to leave, uh, to start the route, and then, when that gets them to school, based on how many stops they have, and how many students they have to pick up. So I know that changes, I don't know if Fowler actually tracks that time, I know there's a general time, uh, that they try to get them out and get started.
Can you remind me, how many miles we cover on a daily basis, do you remember? You guys can ask me.
I do, it's a lot, and I- Thank you, Bailey. I would have 2,100 in my head.
Is that per?
Per day.
Per day, so it's half that morning nap.
About a million and a half dollars worth a month.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Oh, we have a, yeah, entertainer motion.
I'll motion to approve the bus route maps for 22, sorry, 23, 24 school year.
The motion is second to approve the bus route maps, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Under new business, we have, um, any personnel changes approved during closed session this evening will be provided in the draft meeting this, and 72 hours of meeting adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the open session of the regular meeting of the Board of Education of the St. Genevieve County R2 School District.
The motion is second to adjourn the session, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, wait, top. No, I don't read all that. I think I read all that. No, there's a short one. Oh, it's in the motion, sorry, I'm in contact, okay. Here it is. I make a motion to resume a closed meeting with closed record and closed vote for purposes listed in the revised Missouri statute, section 610.021, numerals 3 and 13, 6 and 14. So we'll have a roll call vote. Oh, I'm sorry, we need a second.
Second.
And now, we will have a roll call vote. Mr. Kirschner? Mrs. Resinger? Myself, yes. Dave Bobo?
Yes.
Josh Kettiger?
Yes.
Jamie Vulu?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you all.